Second, 2016. We have a brief show for you, so watch the screen. Why is that one on? Saving money?
Welcome to all of our students, staff, and community members to the 2016-2017 school year at North Penn School District. The buses are rolling, the hallways are bustling. It's going to be another great year, so let's roll. Excited kids, staff, and parents made the first day of school an awesome experience for the 13,000-plus students in the North Penn School District. Welcome back festivities throughout the school district helps the students make the transition back into the classroom successful one. Over at North Penn High School, the new Link Crew welcomed the class of 2019 to their high school experience with a great fanfare. Over 160 North Penn High School students trained over the summer to help the sophomores transition into NPHS, one of excitement and anticipation. The Link Crew will also serve as liaisons for the sophomores throughout their entire first year at North Penn High School. In late August, the North Penn Educational Foundation hosted their 15th annual golf outing. With the generosity of the sponsors and the 130-plus golfers, over $27,000 was raised, making this the most successful golf outing to date. The foundation's mission is to motivate and inspire North Penn students through innovative projects and learning experiences in the form of classroom grants. Congratulations to the 13 North Penn High School seniors who have been named as semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program. From the 1.6 million students nationwide who took the qualifying PSAT, 16,000 have received semifinalist recognition. Congratulations once again to these 13 outstanding young scholars. This Friday will be the annual North Penn High School homecoming football game and festivities. Kickoff for the North Penn Knights versus the Pen Ridge Rams is 7:00 PM in Crawford Stadium. The introduction of the 2016 Homecoming Court and the crowning of king and queen will take place at halftime. Tickets for the game can be purchased on-site for $5 for adults and students alike. Join us for another homecoming as we celebrate our former staff and alumni at the inaugural class of the Knights of Honor Ceremony on Wednesday, November 23rd at 6:00 PM at North Penn High School. James Finne Meyer, Davis Girs, June Brown, Michael Haney, and the late Steve Frederick will be honored for their outstanding contributions to North Penn as staff members and alumni. And it's back, the second annual Thanksgiving Alumni Flag Football Game. Join your classmates, friends, and family and be part of the fun as the North Penn alumni face off against the Lansdale Catholic alumni in the updated version of the crosstown rivalry. Kickoff is at 10:00 AM, and registration for alumni players is now open at npenn.org. That is all for this North Penn news update. Be sure to check out our YouTube channel at youtube backslash NPTV for coverage of all things North Penn. For North Penn Television, I'm Erin Hebner. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was filmed with their airborne drone that they use over school. All right. Welcome again to the regular monthly meeting of the North Penn School District's Board of School Directors for September 22nd. I would like to make the announcement that the board did meet an executive session tonight, September 22nd, 2016, from roughly 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM to discuss matters of potential litigation. So, let's move forward. It is now time for anyone who wish to speak to the board to please step forward, state your name and address, sign the Audience of Citizen logbook.
I'm sorry I'm taking so long. I should have done this before, the Audience of Citizen. Good evening. My name is William Patchell. I reside at 404 Bonnie Lane in Lansdale. And I have a few short topics I don't want to...I'm glad I didn't attend the last meeting because the presentation for the expenditure of several millions of dollars was best presented without any other cross-currents involved. And with all the other things that we have going on and the challenges for the improvement of the district, Mr. Shapinski, your comment to that was very, very appropriate. We have lots of things to do. We've got rugs and paint and walls and doors and everything, which might, in the scheme of things, be more important than some of the other things which were discussed. And I think that what we could do in the expenditures in the athletic area, and that's very important, but you know I'm always for academics, I would like to see the Commonwealth have high school year-round because in a competitive world where the technology is moving at the speed of light, I'm afraid that people who don't realize what's going on are going to be sadly left behind. And by the time you realize you're far behind, in accounting they call it, you won't be a viable or a going concern. And that's what would happen to us. We need to stay right on top of everything that's involved with this technology and everything, all the interdependency of this is very important. Now, back to the athletic expenditures, I think that what we could do is, as in the academic setting, well, how many people are taking this early Latin...oh, I think we have 12 people. Oh, I don't know, we might have to delete that. We could do the same thing in the situation with the athletics. Well, how many people are involved in track? Oh, boy, we have a ton of people in track. And what you could do is you could say, yes, we have 200 or 300 people involved in track. Well, why don't we get a really fantastic track? Or, I mean, 13 million, I think that was the amount that was talked about. That's really a substantial amount of money. And I believe, I like spending money where it's focused on the greatest good for the greatest number of people. And I know we got a lot of challenges because I had heard that, oh yeah, the back of the high school, yeah, we may have to renovate that. I can't even grab, I can't put my hands around that number. That would really be huge. And as you have said, we have not really increased our debt, and we have done a tremendous amount in a prudent way with very, very successful outcomes. And I hope that we could still continue to do that and offer incentives to keep the personnel coming to the district. I heard, wow, they're having a terrible time funding substitute teachers. It was on NPR, I believe, and I said, well, they're out there just...I'll give you a teacher certificate here. So we have a big problem in those areas. We have a problem attracting nurses for the school. That's another area that we're going to really have to worry about. These are mandated by the state. The state is always good on mandating stuff, but of course, they don't give you enough money to be able to do it. So we have to do it our own resources. And that's all I'm going to talk about tonight, but just remember, every time we meet, every time you talk about something, you've got a substantial number of senior citizens. You know, they're not making $53,000 or whatever the average in the area is. They're not really...they're not making a lot of money. You have to keep them in mind. They're really struggling along. If you're making a $200,000 a year, you know, that's just a speed bumper pocket lint. So thank you very much, and keep up the good work and what we're doing with the district. And I believe that we are still number five in the Commonwealth, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patchell. Anyone else tonight? All right, I'm going to move forward with the agenda. Recommend approval of the minutes of the August 18th, 2016 action meeting and the minutes of the work session held on September 13th, 2016 as circulated.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Let's move forward with our committee reports. Personnel tonight, Mr. Kerr.
Personnel committee met in executive session September 6th from 5:30 to 6:30 to discuss matters of personnel negotiation and potential litigation.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Education, Community, and Policy, Mrs. Leonard.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The ECP Committee met on September 12th. At the meeting, the committee reviewed two policies and received informational updates as well. Board Policies Number 4316, Personnel Harassment, and Number 25110, Administration Compensation, were updated to reflect current administrative titles and contact information for harassment complaints. Another item that was presented concerned advertising. A proposal was posed to the committee that the fence around the baseball field be used as a vehicle to sell advertising, with the profits supporting the proposed capital improvements to the baseball field infrastructure. Meetings to discuss and refine this proposal will continue to take place. Also, the committee received an update concerning enrollment for 2016-17. As of September 12th, actual elementary enrollment exceeded the projected elementary enrollment by 57 students across 13 schools. Capping of kindergarten was needed at Inglewood and resulted in approximately 30 students being moved to Nash or North Wales. The overall net enrollment increase did not necessitate an increase in the number of contracted teacher positions. Information regarding 2016 PSSA and Keystone test scores were shared with the committee. When compared with the state average for PSSA and Keystone tests, the scores for the North Penn School District students surpassed the state average scores in all areas. Strategies to increase student learning and improve test scores include curriculum review and alignment to PA Core standards, continued development of higher-order thinking and analysis skills, shift to inquiry-based instruction in science, and use of intervention processes for struggling students. School performance profile scores are anticipated to be available in October. Three overnight student trips were reviewed as well. The next ECP committee meeting will be held on October 10th. Thank you.
Any questions of the ECP Committee this evening? October 10th, you said?
October 10th.
Thank you. All right, let's move forward. Finance, Mr. O'Donnell.
Finance Committee report for Thursday, September 22nd, 2016. An update from the last meeting on August 29th. The monthly financial reports were reviewed with additional discussion on the following item. We had a Northbridge presentation. Mr. Bauer, Mr. Nicholson, and Mr. Hassler presented the feasibility of a potential move of the program to the high school. They discussed the pros and cons, required modifications to the facility, potential cost, and other considerations. Also discussed was how the program has evolved into a program that provides at-risk students an opportunity to recover credits. Sale of obsolete school buses. Mr. Shrocki reviewed the background regarding the seven buses that are recommended for sale for $14,700. Transfer of Capital Reserve Fund. Mr. Shrocki presented the current 15-16 end-of-year projections, which are still subject to final audit. Though through the end of August, it appears the district spent about $2.27 million or less than budgeted. A portion of this positive variance will be recommended for transfer to the Capital Reserve. A final recommendation will be made once the audit is finalized. The 17-18 proposed budget calendar, Mr. Shrocki presented a budget timeline that complies with the PD requirement. Further discussion will occur at the September Finance Committee meeting regarding recommendation...excuse me, regarding recommending passing a resolution not to exceed the Act One Index, which would necessitate a revised budget calendar. State Budget Update. Mr. Shrocki presented the final 16-17 state allocations compared to budget amounts. There is a $400,919 positive variance, meaning we bring in more money than expected in basic education, funding special education, and the Ready-to-Learn Block grant. Refinancing of Bonds. Mr. Shrocki presented information on an opportunity to refinance the 2011 bonds, which may result in savings close to $1 million. PFM will give us a presentation in December, and the transaction will occur in January 2017. Items recommended for the work session action meeting, the sale of the obsolete buses, which is on tonight's agenda, the 17-18 budget calendar year, which will be on October's action meeting, and transfer to Capital Reserve Fund, which will appear on October's action meeting. Our next meeting will be right here on September 26th at 6:30 PM at the ESC. End of report. Thank you.
Any questions for Finance and Mr. O'Donnell? Mr. Shrocki, I got an email from an East Strausberg school board member who did a report on the basic education funding being applied, a plan, I guess, going forward and looking backwards. And he listed 64 districts that were underfunded in the state, and North Penn was one of them.
Exactly. All new money now, from this point forward, unless there's a legislative change, will flow through the new funding formula. And there's no question, we knew for a year prior to the passage of that, that North Penn would be a benefactor of that new funding formula. So this year, for example, in the 2016-17 budget year, that resulted in an extra $421,000 beyond what we had budgeted. We were uncertain during budget time whether the new funding formula would go into effect or not, but there's no question that's a major win for North Penn in terms of basic ed funding.
Thank you. All right, let's move forward with Support Services. Mr. Schilling.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. Support Service Committee met on Monday, August 29th, to discuss the project that took place over the summer, including the high school fire restoration, the high school, and the ESC security and camera upgrades, the four elementary school surveillance camera server upgrade, carpet and vinyl tile installation district-wide, Pendel carpet and VAT tile abatement, the high school synthetic turf replacement at the North Wales, and the North Wales canopy repairs. All these projects have been completed or completed to an acceptable state for the start of the school here. An update of the Montgomery Elementary School renovations and addition project was provided. Montgomery Elementary received the necessary approvals for school to open and accept students for the start of classes. There was one change order to Bristol Environmental Incorporated, which was discussed and which is included in tonight's agenda for board consideration. In addition to the project, Mr. David Horn provided a presentation outlining the findings of the athletic field master plan. The committee recommended bringing this presentation forward to a future work session, which was presented at the September 13th work session. Our next meeting will be held...committee meeting will be held Monday, September 26th, 6:00 PM here at the ESC. End of report.
Any questions of Support Services this evening? Safe...I'm sorry, North Penn Education Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
The foundation met last on September 7th here at the ESC. I am very proud to announce that at this meeting, the foundation unanimously approved supporting the school district's Chromebook initiative by funding both the devices needed for needy families to have internet access at home, plus the data needed. To that end, the foundation issued a check for more than $18,000 for this purpose. I am honored to be part of an organization that is stepping up to the plate and truly making a difference in the lives of our children. The foundation also discussed the request from an NPHS teacher to begin a speaker series so that school with a focus on writers and careers in writing. Plans are being finalized by the foundation, tentatively agreed to fund this new project. A final golf outing report was given, and we were thrilled to learn that the August event netted more than $27,000. The closest we ever came to this amount was nearly 10 years ago, and that was $24,000. Thanks again to our sponsors who helped make this our best fundraiser ever. Upcoming efforts include supporting the North Penn Lansdale Catholic Flag Football Game on Thanksgiving, working with our student liaisons, who are both seniors, and to find the replacements, asking our teachers to submit mid-year grants. Our next meeting is Wednesday, October 5th. If you have any questions, you can contact the foundation. This is Executive Director Christine Liborowski at the district offices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Murphy. Any questions for the North Penn Education Foundation? All right, let's move forward with Safe Schools. Mrs. Charnock.
Thank you, Mr. Shapinski. The committee met on September 12th, 2016. The items that were discussed were Safe School activities. Mr. Ray Wilson provided an update on intruder drills, internet safety presentations, and run-hide fight guidelines. Elementary school camera server upgrade. Mr. Wilson reported that Culp, Inglewood, Nash, and North Wales have all been upgraded to the digital milestone system. The remaining elementary buildings will be upgraded in the summer of 2017. All secondary schools are on the milestone system. High school and ESC security upgrades. These projects are about 95% complete. Additional doors and a secured entrance were added to the high school, and the ESC added cameras, secured doors, and a buzzer system. Building emergency plans and all hazard plan for the district is being finalized. Each building has been distributed a template, and the final plans should be finalized in the coming months. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting will be held on November 14th at 6:00 PM at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you, Ms. Charnock. Questions of Safe Schools this evening?
Just a comment. Oh, I'm sorry. Terry, did you want that?
Could you repeat the date of the next meeting, please?
November 16th. November 14th.
Just a comment on Josie's report. We were told that they put in, I think, seven additional cameras. I routinely ask Steve for workers' comp information, and our number of claims has nosedived. I mean, it's really gone down since we've had the cameras, so they seem to be having some effect. And these cameras now were put at the bakes of some of the stairwells because there seems to be a coincidence of a lot of people missing that last step. And I believe we had zero claims on people tripping on the buses and that first step. That's kind of gone away because now we have three cameras per bus. So the cameras are really helping in our claims, so we're expecting to see that three-year average go down. So the cameras really help out.
Was that one on the back there? Just that big boom? I'd love to see that connected evidence. All right, thank you. Let's move forward with the North Monco Technical Career Center, Mr. Diazio. Who's got it?
I have the report, but Mr. Diazio can speak if you...all right. Joint Operating Committee met on September 19th. The roofing project was complete on time and on budget, so that the contingency funds that everybody put in, we will be getting a refund of approximately $49,509. Yeah, that is great. We met a student who also came here to be recognized, Zach, let me pronounce his last name, Fushetto, who two years in a row won the national winner of Skills and Restaurant Service Hospitality Skills competition. As a result of that competition, he received a full scholarship to the Culinary Institute of America to the tune of about $150,000. So I just once again want to reiterate about how great the Technical Career Center is, and I wish that, you know, people would take a little bit more interest and take a tour and see the great work that they do. We did approve some student travel, and we approved some personnel salaries and hirings. And that's it. And I don't know when our next meeting is, but thank you.
Any of you guys want to add anything to that? Thank you for that roofing update, too.
Doesn't leak.
No more umbrellas at meetings?
The funny thing was, it was a very dry summer, as we know. So there's always that, you know, but apparently the big rains that we had, it didn't leak, so that's a good thing.
Love when a plan comes together.
The Montgomery County Intermediate...Mrs. Murphy.
The MC IU began the morning at North Penn High School for their all-staff convocation. They are so appreciative to Dr. Kurt Dietrich of the North Penn District for allowing them to convene in such a lovely atmosphere. The kickoff went very well. Thank you, North Penn. The evening, that evening, the board meeting was held at our Norristown offices. We have more dues-paying members than ever before. Our Anderson School has 41 students, a 55% increase over any other year. This is such a good way to start the year, and I'm sure Vince will remember several years ago when we were struggling. So it's kind of a good feeling. All budgets were approved for the 16-17 year. 30 new teachers were hired for the 16-17 school year. 26 contracts were approved for the fall for both public and non-public districts. North Penn will be involved with an internet agreement, E-Rate service agreement, and Discovery Education streaming packages. For your information, the IU has just sent us an email. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania prohibits lower Marion from collecting taxes over the Act One Index. This is food for thought. The next IU meeting will be on September 28th in Norristown at the IU. Respectfully submitted, Carolyn Murphy, Secretary.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Any questions of the IU report tonight? Okay, let's move forward with our superintendent report. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recommend approval of settlement agreements for students 09221612 and 3.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Charnock, second by Mrs. Prakowski. Comments or questions to the settlements? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved.
Recommend approval of a memorandum of agreement between the North Penn Educational Support Professionals Association and the North Penn School District regarding the Technology Department reorganization and changes to the collective bargaining agreement effective July 1st, 2014 through June 30, 2017, which is on file in the Office of Human Resources.
Motion by Mr. Diazio, second by Mrs. Prakowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Approved.
Recommend approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Board of School Directors and the School District of North Penn and the North Penn Education Association regarding early retirement notice personal days. It is on file in the Office of Human Resources.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prakowski, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Board of School Directors of the School District of North Penn and the North Penn Educational Support Professionals Association regarding early retirement notice personal days on file in the Office of Human Resources.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of the North Penn School District resident tuition-free 40 school days maximum for students 0922164, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, whose names are on file in the office of the superintendent.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prakowski, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the waiver of tuition for the International Friendship Exchange students for the 2016-17 school year as listed.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions?
Do we have students that go to the schools listed here as well?
We do. We have a sister school arrangement, so we have students that go to schools in those countries also.
Any other comments? Welcome to North Penn. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you.
Recommend approval for the addition to the dental examiners with the associated pay rate listed for the 2016-17 school year per item 7916.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kerr, second by Mrs. Prakowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of Change Order 1 to Bristol Environmental Incorporated for the Montgomery Elementary Renovations and Additions Project at a change of contract amount of $37,925 for changes during abatement per item 8016.
Motion by Mr. Diazio.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Prakowski. Comments or questions?
What was this...we were assured on in the spec, or...
I think they found more.
We found that there was asbestos-containing material in the glue dots that were holding on chalkboards, as well as in the floor tile.
Why did they just get a glue dot?
You mean?
I think it's a little bigger than that, but yes. Yes, and they were unforeseen circumstances which necessitate the change order.
You'll throw that word asbestos in there, and that just seals the deal.
Thank you, Mr. Kerr. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of the sale of seven obsolete buses to 422 sales in the amount of $14,700 per item 8116A through B.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Charnock, second by Mrs. Prakowski. Comments or questions?
Steve, can you just let everybody know how old these buses were?
Absolutely. They range between 15 and 20 years old. They're bas-
They're basically, they've been sitting around for a number of years. They're out of inspection. Many of them won't even turn on. So, it's basically the scrap value for the buses. We have not used them in a number of years. Parts are obsolete. They have a range, I think, between a hundred and fifty and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand miles total, so these are buses that are just completely out of service and are no value to the school district at this point.
Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of department chairpersons as listed for the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen school year per item eighty-two-sixteen A through B.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowski, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district, all four of them, as listed.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. D'Azia. Comments or questions?
Yeah, I want to thank all these people for giving these great gifts. We really appreciate it.
I agree.
Is it odd, number one, seventy-three, seventy-four?
Well, it's actual general supplies.
It's not that odd. So, why don't you go, it's three fifty, and they split it.
These might have been matching from United Way and the Merck Foundation from maybe the foundation.
The math major here said you had them together, it's three hundred and fifty bucks, and...
Yeah, right, exactly. That's right.
That's the procurement.
That's right, it's the contract analysis that we're here on. All right, we have a motion and a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Pass.
Recommend approval of bids per item BA four, A through B, as listed.
Motion by Mr. D'Azia.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of personnel items as listed A through D.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mr. O'Donnell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of student travel per item BA eight.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowski, second by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One abstention. I have to abstain. My kids are competing against these kids head-on. All right, it passes. Move on.
Okay, thank you. I do recommend approval of contracts per item BA nine, A through H, copies of which are on file in the Office of Business Administration.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mrs. Prokowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved.
Recommend approval of alternative placements per item BA ten, copies of which are on file in the Office of Special Education.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Prokowski. Comments or questions to the issue? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Finance report, Mr. Shiroki.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of updates before I move into the financial numbers for the month of August. First off, I'd like to mention that our local audit is being conducted right now by the firm Malley LLP. They should be completed by the end of this week, and we'll have some preliminary audit numbers for the two thousand and fifteen-sixteen year. Also, the State Department of Education has put forth the Act One Index for the two thousand and seventeen-eighteen fiscal year. That'll be two-point-five percent, so a slight uptick from the current year, two-point-four percent. And finally, just a reminder to our taxpayers, we are currently in what's called the base period for payment of real estate taxes. That period runs through October thirty-first. We paid a flat amount of the tax bill. Any tax bills paid after October thirty-first will be subject to a ten percent penalty. So, in terms of the numbers for the month of August, our cash receipts were one-hundred-twelve million, eight-hundred-thirty thousand, six-hundred-thirty-eight dollars even, and our disbursements totaled fourteen million, one-hundred-twenty-nine thousand, two-hundred-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. So, our total cash balance at the end of August was one-hundred-sixty million, four-hundred-eleven thousand, nine-hundred-thirty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. So, that's roughly a nineteen million dollar increase in our cash position at the same point last year, so very positive in terms of our cash flow. And other treasurers report.
Let's move forward with sanction and approval of invoices.
I recommend ratification of disbursements for the month of August, two thousand and sixteen, in the amount of seventeen million, five-hundred-four thousand, seventy-nine dollars and ninety-three cents.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, second by Mr. Schilling. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Under other business, we have the PSBA election of officers. Who wants to talk to this issue? Who's the liaison this week? Well, we're gonna be having a vote, and I think the deadline for us to vote is next month.
Correct. I need to electronically submit on the behalf of the board your vote by October fourth, so they recommend that boards take official action during the month of September.
Sorry, we want to do this.
Well, this, that's what we're talking about.
What's the motion? How do we do this as a motion?
Well, we have a number of positions. Some are uncontested, so we can go through them individually. For example, the PSBA president-elect, there's one candidate, Michael Fashionetto.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Schilling, second by Mrs. Prokowski. All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's go.
It does get a little more difficult as we go on, but right now, it's pretty easy. We have PSBA vice president, which is David Hutchinson, the only candidate.
So moved. Motion by Mr. Schilling.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kerr. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?